Another round of our very important City Hall discussion. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Mike Pennwell, who will take us through a slide presentation, and then, of course, we'll be open for questions.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's truly an honor and a privilege for me to be making this presentation today because this month marks 14 years that I've been working with the council on various issues around City Hall. And in that time, we've actually made quite a lot of progress. And yeah, brings us to this momentous day where I hope we make a decision and move forward. I'm just going to briefly touch on how we got here with the most recent process, talk a little bit about the decision for you today, and then what the next steps will be following direction from council. And I want to return back to our mantra for the project team: A thoughtful decision will be the right decision. Pick one of the options, and we will work with you to make it great. Today represents the culmination of a value-based decision-making process that you've all been engaged in. It started with a review of previous studies and analysis updated to reflect current realities via consultant work, input from a citizen advisory group, and refinement by a cross-department staff team. The thoughtful work by the council subcommittee and then the full council resulted in the five core values listed here supplemented by the basic considerations of project value and time. The project features are listed here. The council agreed that $15 million is a realistic project budget and directed that continued planning efforts should be focused on the existing City Hall site. Both of the options that have been presented provide a minimum of $20,000 to $25,000 square The rebuild option as presented would provide additional shelled space and preserve the existing council chamber as well as 90 to 100 existing parking spaces. The build-new option, on the other hand, would scrape the site clean and build all-new, but no parking is included within the $15 million project budget. So in a way, these two choices have set up a little bit of a false choice. When we started this process, the two options were really meant to represent opposite ends of a design continuum for the purpose of highlighting the differences at the opposite ends of the spectrum, so we could see the opportunities and challenges with each. In fact, you can choose to land anywhere along the continuum you collectively agree is most appropriate. That's really the primary purpose of today's meeting, for you to provide direction on where you want to be on this design continuum. After listening to the values discussion evolved over the past several months and hearing specific preferences at the last couple of work sessions, we have developed a recommended option for you to consider that attempts to reflect the values you told us were most important to each of you. The term "rebuild" and "renew" is sort of what we've named this new one, to reflect the intent of the recommended approach. It starts with retaining the existing council chamber and updating it to meet current technological needs and energy efficiency requirements. It's iconic in form; it's the one part of the building that most people respond to positively; it provides identity, connects past to present to future, and makes use of a part of the building that has seen significant capital improvements over the past 10 years. It's also structurally separate from the rest of the building, so it's relatively easy to work around. The second piece to our approach is to retain as much existing parking as possible. Structured parking is a valuable resource, and it would cost a lot to reproduce it with new construction. This gets to the values of stewardship and economic value. With police out of City Hall, even a reduced number of parking spaces can likely serve the needs of daily public parking, monthly permit parking, and city fleet vehicles. This supports the value of participation by making it easier to access City Hall, which is one of the things we've heard discussed a lot over the past several months. Retaining existing onsite parking would also free up the city-owned half-block across 8th Avenue for other uses, including additional downtown development. This supports the value of Eugene at 200. What do we want the city to look like 50 years from now and beyond? We would also retain the existing public art and incorporate the pieces into a redesigned City Hall in appropriate ways, or even move some of the pieces to other locations as part of the city's collection if that was appropriate. This supports most all the values in one way or another, and is consistent with our public art program. Finally, the remaining building elements and structure would be analyzed in the context of what serves the project goals, particularly the first two recommendations of retaining the council chamber and as much parking as possible. We would retain what serves the project in a meaningful way and jettison the rest if it doesn't serve. Whatever is retained would be added to with as much new as possible to produce a new City Hall that is forward-looking, extremely efficient, pleasant to be in, and creates a new identity reflective of our shared community values in the 21st century. In short, it would be the City Hall we all want at a cost that's within our means. So if you're prepared to give us direction today, we'd like to proceed according to these next steps. Initially, proceed with the analysis and initial design as recommended in the AIS. We would conduct an RFP process to select a design team that would be publicly advertised and incorporate the project values. We would analyze existing building and structural elements to see what adds value to the project. We would begin the initial design work and master planning of the site, considering both current needs and potential future phases on the site. We would consider incorporating other compatible uses. You've talked about possible other functions that would enhance the experience of being at City Hall, and we heard that, and think that we can incorporate some kind of flexible space that could be used for a variety of potential purposes. And we will provide public input opportunities along the way, fairly streamlined so that we can move quickly, but meaningful enough to inform the process, as well as connecting with council and other stakeholder groups. Then we would return to council to approve the design intent, the budget, and a funding plan. And finally, we would proceed with final design and construction. Finish the design, complete construction documents, continue to provide project updates to council and the community with the best outcome of moving in in the summer of 2015, just over two years from now. So I'll leave you with a summary of our proposed rebuild/renew option on the screen for questions and comments, and remind you once again of our mantra: A thoughtful decision will be the right decision. Pick one of the options, and we'll work with you to make it great.
Thank you, Mike, and congratulations on 14 years of talking about City Hall.
On this.
And doing things.
And doing things. Couple things that I wanted to say before we move on the conversation. I feel like every time we have this conversation, we don't know who's listening and watching, so I just want to reiterate that the old City Hall that is now we're not in anymore had severe seismic issues and wasn't built to accommodate the kind of city services that we have now, and wasn't built to be energy-efficient or in any way represent the kind of goals we have for any of our buildings in the city right now. So that's sort of the impetus of actually imperative to build a safe place and a good place for people to work and do the business of the city. I wanted to -- we haven't ever brought this up, but you know, there's a whole collection of sister-city art that's out in front of City Hall that's been kind of, I would say, beleaguered over the last few years, and I hope that we're going to take an opportunity either on this site or another place to really -- those were all given to us as gifts by our sister cities representing those long-term friendships, and I hope we fully utilize them in a way that really is good for our community, either there or elsewhere. George Polley and then Mike Clark.
Thank you. Just like I said, the last time we had a discussion on this, I was not able to attend. Mike was saying that he felt that that meeting was to make a final decision. I agree with Mike on that. I thought that's what that last meeting was going to be, was make a final decision, although our viewpoints differ on where that final decision was going to come out. But I'm glad we're to this point that we are today. In the proposed motion, the wording, as well as any other components that make sense from an operational and design standpoint, to me, is kind of a warm and fuzzy. What does that mean exactly?
Well, that's a really good question, and it is intended to be a little bit ambiguous because, to this point, we've looked at sort of two different strategies, but we haven't really done any detailed design work of any kind. We've done some preliminary analysis of the structure and what the building could accommodate, but not in the full context of how it would work with an initial design. And so what we're proposing here in the motion is that you release us to go do some of that deeper design work along with analysis of the existing structure and building, and start to develop something that works, but is also sort of forward-looking and sort of reinvents the building. And so it's really a matter of landing on that design continuum at a point that makes sense and embodies the values most of all.
And George, I'll weigh in a little bit too on my intent with this, and I'd agree with Mike. But if you also really look at this, my recommendation is we keep the chamber, council chambers, we keep the parking, we keep the public art. And then there may be portions of the existing structure that are needed in order to make those work. If there aren't, then the rest of the building gets jettisoned. So that's really the recommendation. But what we don't know yet is, are there pieces that need to be kept in place in order to make those things work?
All right. And I know it's early on in the discussion about this part of where we are, but as far as the budget, the money budgeted for this project, is this going to be somewhere within the ballpark? Because I know we're going to be really tight on the cash end of this. So is this within the same ballpark as our other options that we had previously?
Yes, absolutely. It's still within the identified $15 million budget, and the purpose is to try to make our budget go as far as possible to see if anything existing beyond the council chamber and the parking serves that purpose and makes our dollars go a little farther.
Okay, and then you were talking about the parking underneath. Now, is that going to be public parking, or employee parking, or open to both? And is there going to be any type of an income coming from that into the city?
I would say that hasn't been determined yet, but we'll certainly look at all those options, and with any structured parking in the city, it would undoubtedly be fee-based in some kind.
And then when we're talking about this, future development, is it going to be -- again, this may be too early in the conversation, but I think it should be built in such a way that we can build up instead of out if there is additional space needed. To me, I think that makes more sense. It'll give us more open space maybe around the existing property for a park, or maybe a plaza where the Saturday market can maybe expand into, something of that nature. And then just on my own personal input on this, on the interior of the new council chambers, you know, the display in trophy cases, I think, are atrocious. I mean, those trophies in there and the artwork and some of the things in there were earned and given to the city for various reasons, and I think it should be a little bit more prominently displayed. And then the other thing is the wooden slats that separate the seating area from the back wall. To me, that is a major distraction for when we have more people there than can sit down. It makes the flow of people a little more difficult, so if there's some way to get rid of that, or limited, or at least be able to open it up so as we're sitting up there and we're looking out, we can see the people standing out beyond the chairs.
Yeah, most of those are non-structural, actually, so they could be removed.
And I'm sure I'll come up with some more ideas, but for now, that's good.
Good?
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate too, excuse me, and want to say thank you to staff for such a long effort, a long, hard effort at trying to get this goal finished and accomplished and this work done. Although this is certainly not my first choice.
Oh?
I know, Mayor. I know that's surprising, right? I barely said anything about it, I know. Although this is not my first choice, I think that this plan is the best choice that remains in front of us. I agree with the direction provided by the motion. I have to leave early and may not be here to vote, so I just wanted to say that where, for anyone's purposes, were there any doubt, I would vote in favor of this plan, because it's the best choice that remains for us. I do have some concerns. I agree with George that structurally on the inside, we should look, and I agree with the mayor, to make more of some of the historic things, the plaques on the walls that show previous councils and previous mayors and such. Certainly, the gifts from our sister cities and the other things that are in those cases should be dealt with in a way that makes them a little more prominent. And I agree as well that the surrounding structure should be cleared away so that it's much more open and transparent. And I also have another personal request, that we get rid of the background and put something more modern and forward-looking there instead. But I suppose there's yet another opportunity for controversy. Anyway, the only real concern that I have is that we're rather locked into the $15 million budget that we've put forward as an idea for, you know, the relative ballpark for this project. The piece of it that concerns me is the $5.3 million. I don't remember the exact number, 5.2, whatever it was, that was listed as staff felt comfortable that we could come up with those one-time capital monies. Here's my concern. In the economic environment we're in, I believe that if we have the capacity to find $5.2 million in one time even for capital investment monies, we should be looking for how to find those kind of monies to keep our general operations intact for the next year while we search for a better long-term money, a long-term revenue solution than the one we're putting, we seem to be heading towards putting forward with new revenues and new plans. I would rather see us have an extended period of time for creating a better long-term solution for cities' operational revenues and scale back or, you know, increase the length of time it takes us to do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris?
I think you can put me down for a second. I'll call you as soon as I find out.
Thank you. I appreciate us getting to this point. In fact, I've been around long enough to hear a lot of this conversation over that, those years, so it's not lost on me. And I appreciate where we are right now. And the continuum idea, I think, is a very appealing one, because if you define the two extremes, that doesn't mean you're limited to those extremes, and we've kind of talked about them in those terms. So the willingness to say, eh, let's look at this as a continuum, I think, is a good one. And I think the notion of where you're wanting to come down on the continuum is one I had to wrap my head around. But the more I have thought about it, the more I've thought, you know, maybe that is the best place to go. So I'm fully supportive of the proposal. I think it's a good idea. But what we're doing today is we're kind of crossing a conceptual line more than we are a detailed line. And so there will be plenty of times when we'll say, I want this thing here and I want that thing there. And I will enjoy that conversation. It will be entertaining and fun. But I think the ability to cross the conceptual line today is a critical milestone, and so I'm supportive, as others are, of making that conceptual decision today. It will really move us a long way down the road in terms of certainty, which was one of those important elements for me. This will give us a huge amount of certainty that we can then begin to work the details on, so I'll support that fully. I think the discussion of how this interacts with other important issues that are going on for us right now, I think, is an important one. And I do know that because of the fact we are limited in terms of the money we have to work with, that we're going to be forced to make some tough choices about what we want to do. And so that's the point at which this relates to the conversation we had yesterday. And it makes it challenging that if we are trying to discern between one-time money and ongoing money and trying to solve ongoing problems with one-time money, you have to be very thoughtful about how you do that and what it really means when you get to the end of the one-time money. And so I think when we get together with the rest of our colleagues on the Budget Committee, we need to be very mindful of the fact that if we're going to continue to try to solve ongoing problems with one-time money, not only will that be something that may or may not lead to a good solution, but it will also eat up the money we can use to create a new home. And so for me, I'm not prepared to sacrifice home for the sake of a short-term solution. So I'm not saying where that discussion will go, but I'm saying I'm not prepared to use up our resources that we need to create our new home in order to solve an ongoing problem. And I'll leave it at that, because I don't know where else that conversation goes, but I need everybody to know that we can't keep trying to solve our problems with one-time money when we get to our budget discussion. So we'll either have to fish, or cut bait, or do something if we're going to go down that road.
So I have George Brown and Greg and Alan and Betty in the queue, and I'm just going to interject something here. I went to a governor's innovation conference yesterday in Bend, and one of the things they talked about was something that they're trying, and I'm going to suggest that we look into that. It's based on Partnerships BC, and it's going to be called Partnerships Oregon, and it's performance-based contracting, where you talk about what it is you want to procure, and then they look for like projects in other parts of the state so that you can, for instance, they talked about another place in the state that's working on doing a county building. And so their notion is to aggregate projects so that you can have a scale where you can bring the cost down for the projects in the individual communities. And I have a card from the person from the state with that, but I'm just going to plop that out there as something that we probably didn't have on our radar at all that might be a real possibility for how we can get more with our $15 million and really allow -- and they really want us to, if they're ready to engage in this, and it seems like something that we find we want to do. This is a life cycle, look at what you're trying to do. This is not only looking at what you need today, but really looking out to the future and trying to -- and they put together a whole team that deals with design and building and risks and all of those factors, and tries to figure out how they can help communities who don't have a lot of resources do the kind of things they need to do. So I just want to open that conversation up, and we'll follow up afterwards, but that might help, as you think about this, that might be interesting for us all to think that there may be some possibilities out there for how to do this on a scale with other communities that will allow us to approach this in a way that can achieve more and meet more of our community goals.
Mayor?
I've actually been following performance-based contracting for the last four or five years and have been on their email list, and so I've been keeping track of things they've been doing.
Oh, the Performance Oregon, so good.
Not the Oregon group, but the -- it was started by a professor at Arizona State University and has been implemented extensively at Arizona State and has gone to other states as well, Minnesota and some other places.
Probably a way of doing this that they did with Partnership BC, which you can look up online, which is probably how you take the concept that you're talking about, that you know about, and how you aggregate those to be able to accomplish more, and that's what the state is interested in.
Thanks, I'll look more into it.
Great. All right, George Brown.
Greg was actually before me.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll switch you over.
Well, thanks, George. I've got a couple of questions with regard to this. Now, the $750,000, Mike, is that part of the $15 million piece of the project, one, and you're nodding yes. And then, secondly, breaking that down for me a little bit in terms of what services are going to be provided by city staff vis-à-vis services provided by outside contractors, and if we are looking at outside contractors to perform special services with that regard, I'm really keen on making sure that we keep it as local as possible.
Right. The process is to put out a request for proposals for the full design team, and this would be the initial stage of a typical design team process. And so it would be getting into the, you know, the initial design schematic design and the analysis of the existing building that would then continue to inform the design through completion of construction documents and so on. So it's the front end of the, kind of, the typical services for a design team, and we'd be looking at an integrated design process that looks at the structure, the mechanical, the electrical, how everything goes together, the sustainability aspects, the energy performance issues, and so on, and looking at all those front-end things and how they inform the overall design. As well as master planning the site with future considerations in mind and where we might add new components and continue with the consolidation down the road.
Well, I'm going to circle back on this again. I'm not clear as to, how much money are we spending with consultants and other outside entities to, in the framework of that $750,000? Can you give me an idea, ballpark, a percentage? What would that look like? What would that entail?
You know, this might be, it might be better to bring back more detail together with the actual request, either in the supplemental budget or the budget process itself, if that's inappropriate.
Yeah, I think so, because part of your question is, will most of the work be contracted out? Absolutely, because we don't have that on staff. Some of the costs, of course, will be to some of our staff who are actually working on the project. Mike is a good example of that. As far as with local, I think we have a pretty good track record of trying to hire local for all of our services when we're able to do that and they meet the quality and the criteria we're looking for. So that will also be a part of what we're looking for in these contracts as well.
Well, hopefully, I would like the staff to bring back a little bit clearer picture in terms of dollar value and what's going out. And as, you know, we've talked before, John, I do have some, you know, concerns about the city, you know, using vendors that have an address in the city, not a P.O. box, employ people in the city, and pay taxes in the city. So that's a real issue for me, and it's something that I'm going to continue to pursue. So I would like to see a breakdown of what those RFPs are going to look like and how much is going out, you know, so I could get an idea of what internal work that will need to be done that'll be, you know, costed out for staff, but also what the external payout is as well.
Yeah, we'll follow up with information.
Okay, yep, I appreciate that.
George?
Thanks, Mayor. Could we go back to, I think it was maybe the second slide or the ones that presented the different options and costs? Or, I mean, not the cost, that's the one, thank you. Well, you know, we're at another path here. We're at another fork in the path. We already took one fork, and now, yeah, let's take it.
Let's eat.
Yes, thank you. I don't know, I mean, I look at this, and I think it's clear that the first option, the one you're proposing, the rebuild and renew, is really the way to go, because the parking spaces are really important. I mean, to replace those with a parking structure, that's $2 or $3 million right there, probably more than that even, $20,000 a space. So I think seismically upgrading that and ensuring, I think we ought to go for essential standards, not just life safety. Spend the extra money if necessary, and make it so that if there is a seismic event, we can come back in and use the building. So that would be one recommendation. And, you know, there's a lot of embedded energy, too, in the old building, and whatever we can save is going to be to our plus benefit. If you have to rebuild it and replace it, you're hauling all the old energy away to dump somewhere. You know, you can search the architectural literature and see all kinds of really cool remodels of old buildings. It's really a great option. I think it'd be very cost-effective, and me, I think the rebuild/renew option is the way to go. It just makes it clear. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I agree with what Councilor Pryor said about one-time money to solve an ongoing -- Yeah, I agree with what Councilor Pryor said about one-time money to solve ongoing budget problems. That's kind of been a hallmark of the way we've been doing our budget process for a long time. And it's not an absolute, we've broken that rule, but it's a good, good rule to try to follow, and it's, I think it's prevented us from digging ourselves into a deeper hole than we, than we already have with our budget deficit. I agree that we should keep within the $15 million budget, and I would like to see as much work done with local folks as possible. So I, I like the city manager's recommendation, makes sense to me, I support it. I think the valuable pieces of this, of the, of the city hall in 20 years is going to be the land and the parking, and then, and a connection to the past, and I think the council chambers is that connection to the past. The existing buildings are frankly terrible. They're, they're, and remodels have, having done several of them and been involved in several on a professional basis, they have so many hidden costs in them. I just do not believe that those are as cost-effective as, as building new. They're concrete buildings, so that means they're very inflexible. You cannot do a lot of things with them because you're, you're stuck with the shape that you have. So that creates a lot of inflexibility and would stifle creativity. No one today would build those buildings the way they're built. They're cinder block buildings. They are energy inefficient, they are inflexible in terms of infrastructure and the way that they work. And it would actually require us to build a building around the buildings. So you're not really preserving much. You're just preserving some concrete that creates a lot of inflexibility and, and problems. I'd like to see this, and so that doesn't make any sense to me. I think getting rid of those to the extent that we can will serve us better in the long run. I'd like to see it be accessible to the street. That's my big gripe with this building is that it's very enclosed. So making it more accessible, I think getting rid of those buildings helps that quite a bit. I would really like to see the new city hall buildings be net, be zero-energy buildings, and that's be very, very difficult using the existing buildings. And George, over 80% of the energy from a building is in its use as opposed to, and very little of it actually is in the construction and the demolition. So it's the operations that really has the embedded energy and the environmental impacts, but also the costs. I think the operational costs of a net-zero building and a LEED-certified building, say LEED gold, are going to be, are going to serve us very well in the long term. So that's what I'd like to see as well.
Betty?
Thank you. I like the motion, and I've been here all of those 14 years and more. Back in '96, the acting city manager said to me, "We won't be in this city hall much longer." I do, I'm glad we're talking about keeping the council chamber. I think that's important. I would like to retain as much as possible of the rest of it, actually. The artwork is really important. The artwork that Mike alluded to, I think, might cause a big controversy if we didn't keep it. But what, and I wonder what we're going to do with Mr. McNutt with his cigar. Do we have to name another room for him for that picture? And if we...
I have an idea, Betty.
Do you?
You can take the picture home, Betty.
I didn't know the man. Is it, did you say 2015, the summer, or 2014?
15.
Isn't there any way we can do it sooner than that?
There is, but as Councilors Lenka pointed out, the operations and maintenance costs of a building is 80% of its cost over time. And if we do a good job on the front end, then we'll, we'll do a good job long-term. And so I don't want to short-circuit the process. Yes, we'll take advantage of every opportunity we can find to, to fast-track. We'll do a demolition phase ahead of the main construction phase. We'll move ahead with, you know, expeditiously, but there's a certain number of steps that have to follow. There's, we're a public agency, so we have to follow certain public steps, and we'll do it as quickly as, as we can.
Good. About the slats, I agree, they probably should come out inside. First, first we should take those wooden things on the outside off. I think they're, yeah, it would be, it would make the whole thing look less awful if we took those off.
Here's what they looked like originally. They were stained originally.
Well, I...
And you can still get those two postcards on the left online if you want to.
Can you? Well, maybe we should have some made. Are we going to, can we keep the duck pond?
Yeah.
Can we keep the duck pond? I know it wasn't built for a duck pond.
Yeah. We could, we can certainly look at probably a different solution to what's there. I mean, it, you know, hasn't held water in years.
I know that.
And when it did, it drowned the little ducklings, and so, some other solution. Yeah, that's one of the reasons we started draining it, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, some ducklings hatched and, over a couple of years, and were unable to get out.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, mainly, and I agree, I paused for a moment. I agree that we should use local talent as much as possible, and there is a lot of it here. Thank you.
Clear?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I was a couple minutes late. I, like Councilor Clark, this wasn't my first choice, but given where we're at, I do support the motion that's before us now. I think it, it makes sense as a way to go forward. I do wonder what the big controversy is about the mural in the back of the city hall. I also, I also tend to agree with Councilor Clark. I don't find it very attractive or elucidating about our community, but we can talk about that at another time.
Yeah, that's another conversation.
And I also strongly agree, and I've said this before, with Councilor Zelenka about opening up to the street. It's really nice, that one postcard with the stairs, but those are mid-block, so it doesn't really, you know, work the way it appears in that photo. So entries to the building at where people are actually going to be arriving at city hall to go in, I think is really important. And I'm, you know, I don't know that we've had a conversation about what functions besides city hall, the council chamber, we want to try to locate at this site. So that seems to me, I mean, maybe that conversation has happened before I came on board or in other contexts, but in terms of trying to figure out what's going to make sense in terms of operational capacity, that seems to be an important part of the conversation. Which actual services are we going to want to house at that site? So I think that's going to inform whatever design agency we bring on board as they scope this out. I think this conversation about whether or not to keep some of the older features or strip it down because the cinder blocks are, you know, no, not functional in this, with the current technologies we have, I think that would be something I'd like to see the design firm try to address for us and look at what the challenges are for any of the items that we might be hearing from council in terms of those elements. We could do this, but that would constrain us here for, you know, those kinds of layout of options. I think that'd be very helpful in figuring out how we want this site to operate for us and what kind of, you know, structures and, and aesthetics we want to see there.
In round two, I've got Mike, Greg, Alan, and Chris. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. In the first round, Chris and Alan mentioned something that I'm sure they weren't trying to ascribe motives or definitions to my concern. I think perhaps maybe I didn't speak clearly enough, so I want to go ahead and amplify that a little bit. Certainly, I don't want to see us focusing on short-term budgeting either. But the, the work that the council does and the challenges that we face as a community are bigger than just our home and the city hall that we have to put forward. And my point was exactly the same as yours, that I'd hate to see us doing things that inhibit our long-term ability to solve our, some of our challenges long-term. That's why I brought it up. My concern is that when we're saying to the community, "We can find $5.2 million to fix a one-term problem, no big deal," but we need more money from them in the form of new taxes to solve our other operational problems, we're dooming that as a potential solution. Now, I don't happen to support that solution as the right way to fix our long-term problem. But either way, I'm, my concern was that if we're doing this and saying it isn't, you know, that a part of our planning is that we're just going to be able to find that, we may be sending the community an unintentional mixed message that, that we don't want to, that'll make solving our longer-term revenue problems more difficult. What I was suggesting is that instead of just accepting that this is a $15 million project, that we at least be open to the idea that we may want to phase portions of this with some of the new budgeting realities that we face, and that there are new ways perhaps to solve both of these challenges, that the community would be, by and large, much more in favor of. That we could solve our longer-term budgeting problems by being flexible with how we deal with multiple problems. That's what I was trying to...
Greg?
There's a couple of things that came to mind, including Councilor Zelenka's comments about the sustainability of the building and the design. And, you know, that is one of our triple bottom-line values, is being environmentally sound and leading that stewardship for the rest of the city. I think it is critical that we, we do that. But we also do that with economic development, as I alluded to earlier. But there, you know, there's another piece of that, that three-legged stool, and that's equity. And one of the equity piece, number of the equity pieces that concern me about this is that the design and the eventual facility be accessible and engageable for the broadest community within our community. I, I find it disturbing that we don't really have engagement or relationship with the youth in our community that I think that we should have. When I was a kid in Ohio, we routinely took trips to field trips to the city council and to the state capitol. I have never, in the 23 years I've been raising four kids in this community, heard of any of my children bringing home a permission slip to go see city hall. And, you know, there's obvious reasons why. There isn't a lot to see in terms of what it is that, you know, you want to engage from an educational standpoint. But I want to look at those things, the value of that, and making sure that we have an open space, a space that really invites our community to come in, to engage the facility, to be able to use the facility for meetings and other things that they need to use the facility for, and really build on, on the, on the concept that for any city, the core of the city is a city hall, and a city hall has to represent in some way the character of the city. And that is what I think that with this redesign/rebuild is something that we have to recapture to a certain degree. And with that redesign and rebuild, that we use that as a mechanism to galvanize our community and to bring our community together. And I think we cannot lose sight of those, of those issues.
Thanks, Greg. Alan, and then Chris.
Yeah, I thought, Chris, you were going to bring up your, your often said, "We can have it fast, cheap, or ripe, but only pick two," but you didn't.
Put that on the wall in the new city council chamber.
Yeah, that would be, we'll sell bricks. Put that one on it.
I got a hip-hop artist for you.
I agree with, with the mayor and Councilor Paulings said about the, about the council chambers, especially the trophy case doesn't really work, and, and the trellises, I don't think that works very well either. I think it's, it's, it makes it less inviting to be in there. It doesn't allow, if we took them out, there'd be more, more people potentially in that space too. And maybe we could take those out and reuse them in the, in the new building, so that might work. I, I think also that the trophy case about all that stuff that's from Sister Cities, also I'd like to see some kind of, if, if that's going to be our link to the past, our connection to the past, then we should, we should celebrate that and add in there some, maybe our rich history of the city and this community, and have that be part of it, and maybe have an annex to it that maybe that you have to walk through, that you, you look at as you come in, so it can celebrate where we've been in the past. So I think that's a good way to, to capture that. I think the council chambers really needs to be modernized. It needs computers, it needs H.V., it needs heat. It needs a bathroom. So there's a lot of things. I think we should keep the public art because that's the throwback to the past and connection to it, and keep that voting board. I really miss that voting board in here. I also think that, I, I like the idea of an open plaza that's really usable. The farmer's market probably better served in a different place, maybe like the land that has the butterfly lot in that area there, so something more permanent, maybe we could work something out with the county. But also a connection that, you were talking about, Greg, which is a, a meeting space, a place for public to use it, and, and that's accessible and that, and that, a place for engagement or connection to the city government. So it could be a place the community could use as well as us, because we have a, we don't have very many meeting spaces. And, and so I think that would be something that we'd want to take advantage of and create in this new, new city hall as well.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the conversation. I think we're, I don't hear any opposition to voting for what's being proposed. So I think we're going to cross that, that major bridge. But what I appreciate about the conversation is we're beginning to say, kind of, where are we going to want to go once we've gotten past that point, and we're now starting to talk constructively, no pun intended. And for me, I think it's important to remember that Otto Potisha, who I don't always agree with politically, but I have enormous respect for his architectural capability, went into that building looking to see if he could figure out a way to just remodel it, and came out of it saying, "I gave it my best shot, and we can't remodel this building," which is why I think he proposed what I jokingly referred to as the gut and stuff, because he knew that there was no way to effectively remodel the building, and he was trying to figure out how to do it. So I think what, where we have landed was even where he was in terms of, if you looked at his designs, the one piece he did retain was the council chambers. And so I think retaining that as the core of our history, even as we honor where we want to go, I think is the perfect blend of what we're trying to achieve. And so I think where you've arrived has really represented the best blending of acknowledging and honoring our hat, our history, while at the same time looking forward to what we need, whether it's in terms of energy certification, operational efficiency, openness to the public, or any of other whole list of things that we can say we want that meet these values. I think this proposal, once it gets all worked out, we'll get there. So I'm pleased. I am very pleased. And it will be actually something of a privilege to vote for this because of how far it moves us down the road in getting to, into the home that I know we all want to live in.
Soon.
Soon.
Just, I wanted to, to say how much I appreciated all these comments, but especially how much I appreciated Greg's comments, because I, I think it's important when we think about our past, our future, our, all the different folks of our community, that we don't forget our young people, and that they, in some way, we, we use this as a way to let them know that they're front and center in our thoughts, and that everything we do is for their future. And, and I think that's a very, we have an opportunity to send a very important message right now. And I think having your, many of you have spoken about meeting space. I think having, having a meeting space that is available for community use would be, for all parts of our communities, it would be a really important connection. And I know I've heard many times the notion of a parklot gathering place as well. I think all of those are really good connection things for us to be thinking about. I'm not ready to give up on the farmer's market as a possibility yet, but, but I, I think it's part of the conversation, because I feel like I'm going to be waiting for the butterfly lot till something flies away, so.
That's something Chris is over.
So I'm, I'm going to, I'm aiming to, all those goals that we have, you know, we're here for a relatively short period of time. All those goals we have, I just want to chip, chip them all away and, and know that we've done a lot of things that people have been wanting to do for a long, for a long time. And I totally agree, and I've heard this around here, I totally agree with this, that, that city hall needs to be a place that people have ownership of and really has meaning to... to our, to our community. It's not about us, it's not even about the staff work we do here, it's about what it does to function for our city and what kind of place it is for our city as a whole. I think it's a really important thing and I personally feel a great hole in the city when for, I don't know, for at least the, I don't know how many years we've looked at the city hall and gone, mm, don't want to show that to anybody. So I, I had mayors come to town last summer and they all went, "I, we take it, you're on, you're moving out of that thing." Yes, so I, it's very hard for me, and I've said this many times, but it's so true, how can I go around and tell other people that I want you to do this and that and the other and then look at our own facility and we're not walking our, our talk? So this isn't, this is important economically, it's important in terms of social justice issues, it's important in terms of us walking our, our talk. So I'm happy we're at the moment and now I'm going to go.
Okay. I move to direct the city manager to pursue a city hall design on the current site with the goal of retaining the council chamber, existing parking to the extent possible and public art, as well as any other components that make sense from an operational or design standpoint. If council chooses any of the options above, staff will be requesting $750,000 to complete this phase of work.
Second.
Muzen seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. I see eight hands up and none in opposition. Thank you all very much and, okay, next up, two years, Betty.
Start the clock.
The clock already started, the clock started in August.
Oh, all right, less than two years.